Thank you. Jim said it would be here around some.
No, it's good. I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, March 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Bellegio Planning Board. The first item we have this evening is to continue public hearing on Prospect Hill. Is Jim here yet?
Jim is going to be here at 7:15.
So what I'd like to do is hold off until Jimmy's here so he can address concerns that may arise. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing on 455 Hartford Avenue. Amy, can you bring us up to speed on what's happening with that?
Sure, I received an email this afternoon about 2 o'clock that Mark Allen will be addressing some of the peer review comments. He wasn't able to provide us the hard copies that he sent in PDF on Friday and I put them, you know, we really, we need to have those for the meeting. So he said that he will be here for the next meeting.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is on the 13th.
That's what he had requested the 13th, but again, that doesn't work into your schedule.
Yeah, I would like to push it out to potentially mail.
Okay.
Will I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say if I may say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passed unanimously.
One clarification just for Tina, the motion was made by Brian Salisbury and seconded by Dennis.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Then what I'd like to do is bounce down to general business. Do you want to mention the associate member reappointment?
Yes, we have very exciting news, one of our associate members was reappointed to the position here. Playing board. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
There might be a time to take a field period, but I think he's supposed to go.
Only a term with us with a field period.
So congratulations.
Brutal.
Have we had a chance to review the minutes from the March 9th meeting?
I had one comment to pick up on with Bill's same last meeting. And I think that identifying who's making the motions will help going forward with Mike. I know, like, I previously thought that I was, I thought I made that motion in the past and, and like, no, no big deal. But last meeting I made every motion and my colleagues have left over here getting credit for some of the, some of the, but I think.
We can take a look and clarify.
Yeah, we can just change someone's name.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
With those amendments, you can get that changed.
That passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you Tina for doing those. And who made the motion on the minutes? That was Dennis, just so we know, so it's crystal clear.
Seconded by Dennis.
Okay, so Brian, Brian Salisbury is seconded by Mr. Trevino.
Well, that's perfect, thank you so much because it is hard. It would be better probably if I was at the meeting, but it is hard trying to zoom in to see whose mouth was moving when they made.
I understand, just for the record, I'm the better looking one.
I'll put that, I'll put that next time in print.
And the older one.
Well, how quickly your meeting go down. All right, what I'd like to do now, since we're ready for review, is Bellamy, Bethlehem Shore's decision for review. We need to use an edit on that decision.
Yeah, those, they were edited and we have the official one for signature.
So we need to make the motion to approve the edited endorsed decision.
And those you had, your official copy is in your pocket, there's blue stickies, so if we want to pass that over to someone. And the bottom though?
Okay. So I edited a motion. Will I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was, the motion was made by Brian Salisbury.
Seconded by Nick.
Nick.
Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Brian, Bill says yes.
Bill's a yes.
Aye.
Nick's a yes.
And so the motion is to, so the motion is, we've got two documents, so it's to sign the Inclusionary Housing Special Permit. Promotion.
You need two copies, please?
There's, there's.
I'll pass it down now. Excuse me.
Okay, and then we also need a motion on the special permit modification decision to sign on. So we have the inclusionary and then you have the modifications that you voted on at the last meeting.
Aye.
So that's Brian Salisbury.
For the special permit.
Modification.
Modification.
And seconded.
Seconded by Bill Devine.
Bill Devine.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I may say, yeah.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously, you know our names right now. We're still waiting for Jim and kind of post around the, maybe in the.
You have the other ones for signature?
I think it's right there.
Oh, we're sending two copies, more than each?
We just need, no, we just, that's fine.
The next item on the agenda is the Hartford Avenue Overlake Warren Article Submitted. We have had a subcommittee, of which I am chair, that has been working on this for, since November. We are ready to present a Warren article to the town. Rob, you want to give an overview of what we've done?
Sure, well, when, Amy, the presentation will be the planning board's the second meeting in April?
We're having the presentation on the 27th of April. And basically all you need to do tonight is, because we really can't discuss all of it, we're just basically recommending it to the selectmen to put it on the ground.
So we need a confirmation, Rob, that the planning board shall sponsor the article.
Yeah, we're sponsoring the article.
And then there's a formal presentation.
And then there's a public hearing that I posted, yes.
So did someone make that motion?
Someone.
And that's Brian Salisbury?
Seconded.
Second.
By Nick?
By Nick. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Also, a motion for the planning board to sponsor the Hartford Avenue Overlake District by repeal and replace with the proposed subcommittee language. So we're sponsoring it, then we're repealing it, the language that's there, replacing with new language. So kind of a H2 motion.
Okay. All right.
So there's a motion on the floor, the planning board spots in the Hartford Avenue Overlake District zoning by law by repeal and replace with the proposal from the Hartford Overlake District Subcommittee.
Replace what's on the Warren.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that would be by Brian Salisbury?
Seconded. Seconded by Nick. Any questions or comments?
Is it time to ask questions about this?
Now, I think we have a presentation in, in April.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion also passes unanimously.
Perfect timing.
All right. So we've gotten rid of those other items, the big item this evening on the agenda is going to be the continued public hearing, as they said about 11 minutes ago, on our Prospect Hill Estates. Jim, can you bring us up to speed on what's happening?
Absolutely, good evening, everybody. So at the last, it's been a while since we've heard from Prospect Hill Estates, the applicant at our last gathering had sought the adequate access concern from the town of Franklin. He has since resolved that issue and, and it's in your package that Franklin has issued that, that letter of approval for the access with some conditions. And the board can certainly consider those conditions when making a determination. Before you this evening, the applicant has the same plan set as, as once, but with some questions and comments for, I think, opportunities to resolve this evening. And then we can clear a path to how we can get this project moving in the right direction.
Would you want to come up so, would you want to come a little bit closer so we can see you on our screen? There you go. There you go.
Thank you, for the record, Luke Patrasi, Wall Street Development Corp. As Jim has indicated, it's been a while since we were here the last time. And in fact, the last revised plan that we presented, along with answers to certain questions that the board had raised, we submitted those on October 12th. And so since that time, I don't know if we've met since that meeting, been quite a while. So the main, the main sticking point at that time, primarily the board was concerned about with access to Prospect Street in Franklin. And since that time, we had filed an application with Franklin Planning Board for approval, they denied it, we went to court. But what are going to issue the certificate of vote and settle it. So recently, I think, March 13th, they issued the certificate of vote, hasn't been recorded yet. Primarily the plan and that certificate of vote, Bellingham has to go first because it has to be modified in any way. We want those modifications to have before we file with, bring the plans to Franklin because they have to endorse the plan as well. So both towns will have to endorse the plans. So tonight, I'm hoping that we can go to look back at some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. I can go through the list that we have, there was a comment letter from GLM, I don't know if that, the board members had. Let me just run down the list and then we can pick and choose. So at that time, the board wanted retention basin drain times was a question I was asking, we provided a calculation for that. Was a request for a calculation of surplus material to be exported. There was a traffic report that we provided with site distance calculation. We also submitted a revised stormwater management report. And there was a revised look at waivers that we submitted. So what I think tonight, we, in order to get the plans to a final drawing preparation, we've made a number of waivers that were requested. And that's in the board's discretion whether or not they want to grant those waivers or deny the waivers. And so we need some direction tonight on what waivers the board would approve, what waivers the board would not approve.
Okay.
Therefore, we would have to revise the plans accordingly to meet, meet your, your conditions.
Okay.
I know the, one of the things that was, I don't know if we read the decision from Franklin, but, you know, we're creating a homeowners association to maintain that stretch of road that's in Franklin. And we'd also, as discussed at previous meetings, we were intending to create a homeowners association that would maintain the common areas and particularly the homeowner basins, which I think is a better approach than having the town be responsible for those things because my experience, they don't get maintenance, they get overgrown and then they don't function at their full value. So on the regulations, I think the board's regulations call for the pension basins to be on their own separate lot and in the perimeter, and a chain link fence erected around the perimeter. And that, I can go through the others, that was one of our principal ones that we'd like to see. The, we have section 245-10A1E test pits and soil moorings. Section 245-10A1I environmental analysis, traffic analysis. Landscape plan, I think we upgraded the plan previously. Notarized documents. We provided scale of plans at 1 to 40. Changing grade limit to 7 feet from existing grade. The tension basins and six foot chain link fence, so over. Oh, we have requiring the trees to be planted before a certificate of oxygen to be granted for each lot. So we're asking for a waiver that we'll finish paving and it's been on the roadway, so they don't get damaged. No, that's pretty, pretty much it. So those waivers, I don't know if the board have the inclination to discuss each one of them individually or pick out the ones that don't like and deal with the rest of them on the group vote.
Before I turn it over on the board members, I want to go back to some of the things that we've discussed in the past. I think right now it may be a little premature to talk about waivers for a couple of reasons. There's still a lot of items we need to address. I also think it's been a while since the public has been here, they've been going on it for a while. I think we may have to notify the abutters. And what's the most efficient way to do that and to keep expenses low?
Well, I think, you know, obviously that would be up to Lou to do that, but I don't think they need to be certified. I think if, you know, if that's the action of the board, it's up to the applicant to do it, but I think regular mail.
Yeah, we don't have any problem, it has been a long period of time and, you know, we're not, we don't need to rush this thing at this point.
No, correct.
You know, we've been at it for a while. So I have no objections to notifying abutters, we have to fix the time and a date, a time when it can be scheduled.
Yep.
And I believe that will be, I think I've extended the decision time to April 30th, so we have two.
I think we may, we may have to extend that decision tonight to be on April 30th.
Well, I guess let's say, you know, schedule a hearing and then I can extend it.
Yeah.
We can.
I mean, we don't need to go through that, we can do it later on, but I don't think April 30th is kind of abstract based on our schedule. Also, in regards to our base, German back on the topic?
What is the normal process for a number of days for notification? For if we were going certified mail, would it be 14 days before the meeting?
For the, the official process is that once somebody submits their application, for a public hearing, it would have to be 14 days prior to the public hearing, but we've already opened the public hearing.
Okay.
So, you know, again, it's up to the board, you can certainly send them certified, but you can also, you know, it's $8.10 for each, not that it's, but you can also send them right.
Okay, but we had it with seven days.
Usually there's just one notice that goes out when you file it, up to the public themselves to keep track of when it happened, but it's been six months almost since.
Yes, so 14 days is the standard, so standard, so 14 days before or next.
Whenever we.
Whenever we decide.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, as, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, we can do that. I don't know that you want to advertise it too, you know.
I mean, it's up to the board, they don't think we need to.
I think sending out letters is better.
That's.
There's another people going to read the paper. I want to get back to the basins being on separate lots and that all basins need fences around them and they need to be out, and I'm going to talk dirty talk here, okay? Correct me if I use the wrong terminology, the inner riparian zone, was that close?
Yeah, it goes.
Okay, thank you. And then waivers such as the time and traction report, we consider those once we have a final decision and update the plans. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, you know, there's been some discussion about inner riparian zones lately. And we have offered to move one of them.
Okay.
So these are just administrative type exercises that we can do. Move it and rephrase it and then that would be where it's located, you know, when the plan proceeds to construct them. Really, you know, I think that's, I know, I know you need a public safety issue, but the fence really is something I saw.
I understand, but you're tied to your risk manager for, you know, 30 years of my career. And it can be an attractive nuisance at that.
But if it's not a public way or if the town is, if town is off of maintaining it, where is the liability to the town?
Probably this board.
Thank you.
I mean, if you're going to create a board, yeah.
I don't know.
They would, you know, take a shotgun approach if something happened and sue all the parties involved in the decision. Any other comments?
Well, are we going to go through each waiver or?
No, I don't, I think it's a little premature at this point.
Yeah, I think it might be good to give applicants some direction on some of these things.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the only reason why, if we're going to make revisions to the plan.
Yeah.
And we would make those revisions in consideration of what your decision would be on those waivers, because in some cases, the waivers may affect whether or not what gets revised on the plan. So better to just try to wrap at least some sort of bulk, sort of waivers, the ones that you think you can, you know, have a problem with, so that way we're not completely coming back with revised plans before you sign the plan. That's all I think.
Jim, what was, here's my feel, as you said earlier, it's been around six months with the public has been. When you talk about waivers, I think the public wants to know beyond the meet right now, what the waivers entail. So I think when we have our next meeting, we can get into more detail. Jim, what's your feel?
My, you know, historically, this board has not voted on waivers, but if there's any non-starters, if you see on the waiver list something that you know is of great concern, you know, we typically do call them out and, and that's not to say more may come out if the public is in attendance and have concerns, but, you know, if you see something on the waiver list that is of concern, as we just discussed, you know, the, the sport has always said, basins off on a different lot, basins have fences around it on a residential development. You know, that, that does to Rob's point, give some direction because, you know, it's, it's just a non-starter for, for the board. So if there's anything in there that you do see that you just simply could not favor, you certainly could make that known to the applicant. And again, some of those things are, some of those waivers are very minor in detail. And as we mentioned at the start, the test pits, I certainly would recommend waiving that at this time and condition it so that we're not tearing up the, the woods out on South Maple.
But I kind of agree with Jim, but so for the next meeting, I, you know, if we're going to like organize this, like a continued public hearing notify, you know, all the abutters. I think we probably, and since we're going to extend the decision, we probably should have the public in, discuss the waivers, then come back with a revised plan, show them the waivers.
That's fine.
You agree?
Yeah.
Like, don't move the potential.
I'm just one person.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You know, what's your, what's your feel? Are there any things right now that are minor in scope?
Most of the waivers, I think, are more minor, it's really more conditions based on the, you know, when it comes to construction. I think the basins is something that we should discuss tonight to give you direction because that's, that's a significant change.
Yeah, it is, the moving of the basin and dividing the basin on a separate lot, those are really kind of the two major revisions. And then we would, as part of the overall waiver package, we would come back with a revised set of plans one time rather than go through the duration two or three times. So we notify the abutters, assuming the board can schedule a date specific, notify the abutters in 14 days, we come back, we discuss the waivers. Then we come back with a revised set of plans.
Based on the waiver discussion.
Based on the waiver discussion. And that would take two or three meetings, I guess, so we have one more meeting for discussion, one meeting for revised plans, and then one meeting, I guess, whatever the policy of the board is regarding issuing the decision or voting to the, the, the certificate of moor, what, what people do.
I think that's huge.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. There's a couple items in the peer review that we maybe should talk about too. I don't think they're game changers, but just things to maybe be aware of as we move forward.
What were there?
So, well, actually, before I start, just from my records, there were three rounds of peer review, right? There was the initial one, there was a second one, which had the enforcement order, which we don't need to talk about, and then the third one, which was, I think, back in December, and then you responded, I think, in January. That sound about right?
It could be, I mean, honestly, the peer reviews have been an entanglement of, I don't know where my $25,000 of mine, but it went. So between the Conservation Commission issues and they did very little review for the planning board, my estimation, so.
So the only things that I noticed in the peer review comments that I think we should discuss, I agree, a lot of it has to do with Conservation Commission, I don't, I'm not getting into that because that's a whole different issue. But I do know there are just a couple of things, I know, I know that the fence around the basins waiver, which they commented on, it's up to, really ask me that decision. There was an item regarding the streetlight photometrics plans, which I.
I don't think we've provided this, I think we've just shown the streetlights appropriate distances.
Correct.
I don't recall anybody requesting photometric.
I don't think anybody did request it, I think that that's why, it just hasn't been discussed because it's been a lot of, you know, we've got the peer reviews and I think.
Got a little regulation in your rules and regs or is that something that you just asked?
It's section 240-49 in the zoning bylaws.
Zoning, not subdivision.
It shouldn't be subdivision, that could be zoning, I believe. Is that right, Jim? Do you know off the top of your head, is section 240 zoning?
Right, that's not part of the subdivision regulations, but still a part of the, our zoning bylaws.
So.
Are you asking us to do apply with the zoning bylaw too?
Why?
I mean, when we design the plan, we design based on your subdivision rules and regulations, not your zoning bylaws, so, other than making the lots conform to zoning.
Yeah, I believe that that was a requirement, is it the site plan approval, Jim?
Right, under development plan approval, you must adhere to. Right, under development plan approval, you must adhere to the, the zoning. The lighting, though, uh, it is a little bit different. And we could talk about this further, but the lighting requirement uh for streetlights. I think it's a little bit different than what's in that, in the zoning. The photometric is meant for. Uh, onsite lighting and not spilling off on the property, I believe, is, is how, how it's read.
Okay, so see, so I don't think, not a problem then. That's why we gotta talk about it.
Right, exactly. Well, if it was in there, we would have done it or protested the way.
Yeah, no, I got you. So that was one, and then I know. The other item, which I think you noted in your last comment response letter, was that. Four foot separation of groundwater in that overlay district, which it sounds like you're gonna.
Comply.
What was that?
I said, we comply.
To the four foot separation, okay.
We, we have the option under your, don't wanna go to two feet because we're two, eight or eighty thousand square foot lot.
Okay.
But we decided not to. We selected all the way it is.
Okay, alright.
We comply.
I saw, because I know in your comment, it said that. I think your response that you didn't have to, which I was wondering.
We don't revise the basins at all. They all comply with.
Even in the water resource district is for you to divide.
Yeah. I mean, that's what, I've read it that way. There was an exception for eighty thousand square foot lot that you go up two feet. Separation, which is typical uh, time, stormwater, you know, the state stormwater guidelines. Law, you go two feet, but because uh, Bellingham has their own stormwater bylaw that is more stringent. And we, we would have to go to that if we didn't, if we would. If we were doing uh some sort of other development like uh, fight wind, arcana or something of that sort, or. Continual development, we definitely comply with the four feet.
I thought I read in here on the summer fourteenth that it didn't. Let me see if I can get the number. And again, this is something we're probably gonna talk about next time.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make sure, we make sure that we.
The, the summer fourteenth, those stuff would be on the peer review.
Right.
A lot of that's gonna come up next time. Okay.
And there aren't a whole lot of items, I think, that are in our review that.
It seemed to me, as I recall, that most of the items were at the board's discretion. We got into waivers and.
Correct. I agree. And I think a lot of the waiver requests, like I said, it doesn't necessarily have to be the plan as it more have to be dropped.
Or a call, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, those are mostly the items that I noted. Kind, it sounds like. Yeah, exactly.
All the utilities are on the ground.
Right, yeah.
Liability, that's always been my concern on the basis.
Uh, you heard me talk about the uh fences. Where do we stand public safety wise with fire items?
Well, we're gonna have to, um, we haven't had any feedback or commentary from the fire chief.
Okay.
And that's a. Um, proper discussion and, you know.
Jim, I, I think the fire department wants two hydrants, correct?
I, I don't know. Well, they usually go every five hundred feet, so there's no town water. On Prospect Street. And there's no. Technically, there's no town water on the site.
Okay.
Under subsequent proposals, then maybe town water available.
If I recall, Don DiMartino had issued something to us before he left Icemo running a loop. So we have two fire hydrants. Was that where you found him?
Yes, yeah, there, there's certainly discussion of running a water line so that it can provide for adequate safety. Uh, the fire chief hasn't outlined where exactly he wishes those hydrants to be, but they will certainly have to be placed on. A plan or conditioned by this board that it's done, you know, prior to building permit.
I think that's one we need to address.
Absolutely. Uh, Don left?
Uh, yes.
Certainly was, I don't know if he did.
I'm sorry?
I heard that he was retiring, but I don't.
Yes, he has retired. Yes.
No, I think we can go to the public hearings.
I have nothing to add.
I think what I'd like to do, this has been a long process. I think, um. When we look at stormwater, once we have a final plan, we can look at stormwater.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be designed according to the, you know, we just submitted a report, we just gonna do the basin.
Yeah.
I think we comply with all the regulations, but we got in stormwater.
So, okay. Now, what I, I would like to entertain, we have a pretty busy meeting on the twenty-seventh. With uh North Street and the Warren article and the presentation from the subcommittee. Something I may want to pursue to, um. May eleventh. Is that?
Will, this is, that's still. Um, I don't think, I know we notified the, but I don't expect to.
I, I understand, but there were, there were some here at the initial meeting. I think it's only fair that they didn't be notified.
Oh, sure, no question.
So, um, I know we have a busy night on the, um.
You have a meeting on the twenty-eighth?
The eleventh.
Twenty-seventh.
And there's a meeting on the thirteenth, but, um.
That one, we have Snet Trail.
We have Snet Trail.
The six, six lots of the.
Shouldn't.
And I don't think about that one, I'm sorry?
That one shouldn't be very.
Do you have enough time to get everything?
Today is what, the twenty-third? I have to notify the board tomorrow or Saturday. But just give me a fixed date.
I, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the date.
Oh, yeah, I'm comfortable. We're gonna come back, talk about the waivers, and then when they come back, come back May eleventh.
Then that, that seems, uh, explained the decision deadline. Most, most likely, we probably eventually do. Because we can, yeah. So what I like to do then, give a motion to continue this. Do the uh April thirteenth meeting. Thanks. You need a, you need a second?
That was a motion made by Brian Salisbury.
By Brian, second by Dennis.
To April thirteenth, that is.
Dennis?
Hi. Hi.
Hi, hi.
I.
That motion passes, you know?
Great, thanks for that.
Yeah, and any help, you know, Amy will be available. Oh, um, one thing, do we need any money in our peer review? Have we exhausted our peer review account?
The peer review is at zero.
Okay.
Yes, peer review is at zero.
For this board.
For everything. It was a joint account.
Okay. I assume we're gonna need additional peer review? Jim?
Well, it's, it's up to the board. Perhaps we wait until um after we hear from the, the public on four thirteen and see where the next steps go from there. Uh, in the revised plan, we could have that discussion at that time.
Yeah, just only, there may be a need for some additional monies.
There are no objections from this board requesting some additional monies.
Okay.
As long as it's spent in the right way.
I, I think we're pretty, pretty with people. So, um, that motion is passed.
Great, I'll, I'll get those notices out. We'll see you on the thirteenth.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being flexible with the meeting day.
No problem. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Anything else? I mean, I think we're done.
I think that covers it.
Oh, um, I do need, uh, we, we put out, um, Hartford out. To the eleventh, correct? On the continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
In May eleventh, yes.
I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
The move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Nick, Amelia.
Brian, thank you.
And who made the motion to adjourn?
Brian.
Just make sure that there's somebody, I just, I wanted to make sure Don Marie, if she wanted to say anything.
Don Marie, do you have any comments?
That's fine. I just know that she was here.
Can you notice your hand is up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, nobody's speaking, so we're good. Motion to adjourn, that was by who? Brian Salisbury.
Yeah.
And seconded by.
Jim, thank you for your help this evening.
Thank you all. That was very nice.
Saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.